All right, welcome to the, what is this, August 25th Select Board meeting. We've got a full agenda, so let's get started. A couple of things, we're going to do public comments at the end. And we're going to move up the last item to the first item, so the folks can have dinner. We are, I have on the agenda to appoint a new highway foreman, a gentleman named Bill or William C. Rennie. Do you want to come up?
Sure. You want me to come up?
Yeah. So say hi to the town.
Hello, town.
Hello, townspeople.
Yep, welcome to Stockbridge. Do we have any questions for Bill? Do you go by Bill or William?
Bill.
Bill.
Less of a trouble.
Just to let you know, me and Hugh conducted interviews. We're recommending Bill for the position of highway foreman. He comes with a deep background and experience, and we think he'll be a great addition to the town. I did put out a contingent offer to him prior to this with all of our paperwork, reference checks, everything else that needs to be done. Everything's been completed, and now is the final piece, which is the board to formally approve.
I'll make a motion that we...
Let me just see if there's any questions.
Any questions?
Well, we can make a motion and...
I'll make a motion that we hire Bill for the position.
I second it.
And do we have any comments from the public?
Oh, this is easy.
Yeah, exactly.
A little nervous.
So all those in favor of hiring Bill?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, congratulations, sir.
On the board.
Thank you.
Hugh, good job.
See how smoothly this town runs?
Now, I could tell you, I come from...
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Go home, have dinner, and...
All we're doing.
Went down, told to go. The next thing on our item is a special permit hearing to consider the application of Stephen D. Alverbach and Rachel S. Rivest for property located at 36 Lake Drive. And is the applicant here? Yes.
Yes.
Hello, how are you?
Hey, Shannon Boneshaw, White Garden area.
Hi, Shannon, how are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
Good.
So this is a single-family property located at 36 Lake Drive on the west side of the outlet of Stockbridge Bowl. Lake Drive is here, it's a single-family house on an existing non-conforming lot and structure. What the property owners would like to do is construct two small additions on the property. Actually, one, remove part of the structure, put an addition on, and then another addition, both on piers. It will make this no more non-conforming. It'll stay below 10% lot coverage and be no more non-conforming to any of the setbacks. Specifically, we have 130 square feet here chimney and entryway that is going to be removed, and a 115-square-foot new entryway on piers. And structured on the north side of the house, and on the south side, an 80-square-foot utility room on piers. The house is on a frost wall. They are doing some interior renovations to make it a four-season home instead of three-season, and deal with some water issues coming off this hill. If you know this property, it drops off very steeply off Lake Drive, or right to the foundation of the house. So we're moving water around and doing some improvements inside. So there's no room with the frost wall for utilities, so that's the purpose of this new room here. As far as setbacks go, there is, like I said, 0.3 acres of land. It's 177 square feet, or 177 linear feet of frontage. Front yard setback required is 40 feet. We're at 23 feet at this corner, at this corner, and the new one is going to be 25 feet. Side setbacks, the closest, is 47 feet, and we're actually going to be 48 feet now. The lakeside, we're at 15 feet, and that's going to remain at 15 feet. Also, as part of this, we have a new septic system and a new dock location. This is an existing drinking water well, and we have a replanting plan for the plants that are coming down, the trees, and some wetland improvements along the shoreline. We have approvals from the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board.
I have no questions, everything is right where it belongs.
No, it's fine. No, I was at the conservation meeting.
I just have a couple of minor things. One, how deep is the water by the dock? Do we know?
How deep?
Deep is the water by the dock?
It's fairly shallow. This is going to be a floating dock.
Right. The only reason I ask, and this is totally up to you, is that I used to run the harvester, and if it's a straight dock, we can get closer to the weeds on both sides. Whereas if it's like a, you know, a T like that, then it gets a little bit harder to mow around the dock.
Yeah.
So as you can see, the property is really inside of...
The land comes out.
So there, so when the harvester come by, it's not anymore, you're not going to get anywhere near the dock. There's a lot of silt, silt there is too shallow.
Okay, that's what I was asking. All right, good. And I think that's all I had, so...
At this point, they're looking to access their kayaks, not put a pontoon over here.
Well, either way, I just wanted to say that, you know, we try to get close to the docks, and if you had a dock that, you know, you know, along the sides behind the T, you know, you can get closer to it, was my only point.
Thank you.
That's out of our...
No, it was a suggestion, it wasn't a requirement. Okay, so we have a motion. We have to call, hold on, we have to follow our kind of thing here. So if everyone has talked, anybody in the public want to comment? For, against? No, here, none? And we have no questions from the board? So I think, believe I need to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing and move to deliberation by the board. Roll call vote, all in favor, aye, Patrick.
Aye, Chuck.
Aye, Jamie.
All right, so deliberation.
I am, also.
I don't have any questions, I'm okay.
Me neither. Any member can now move to approve, deny, or continue.
I'll make a motion when we approve the special permit.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Patrick. You are all set, thank you.
I'm glad you...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right, on to the next thing. Let's see, we've got to go back to the agenda. The next one is a special permit hearing to consider the application of Front Yard LLC for property at 310 Old Stockbridge Road, requesting a two-year extension to existing special permit. I'm going to just read the statement on this topic. Public hearing, 310 Old Stockbridge Road, this is the Elm Court property. The special public hearing to consider the application of Front Yard LLC for property at 310 Old Stockbridge Road, requesting a two-year extension to existing special permit, has been withdrawn by the applicant. The reason for this is that the legislature enacted provisions tolling, extending local permits during the COVID-19 state of emergency. The state of emergency was terminated by Executive Order 69, effective June 15, 2021, adding a total of 462 days to the permit. Therefore, the permit expiring on September 10, 22, will expire on December 18, 2023, which is the first weekday following 462 days. So hopefully, we can pull some financing together and, you know, move on with that one. Are there any questions on that? Hearing none, we're going to move on to the next thing. All right. Take action on meeting minutes for July 14 and July 28. I'm going to put that off to the next meeting. Council on Aging Recommendation to Appointment of Jack Gremlie to Council on Aging. Want to talk a little bit about Jack?
As you guys know, for a number of months, we've had a working group putting together restarting the Senior Center and the Council on Aging. We're going to be coming very soon to the Select Board, actually, at the next meeting. I'm going to ask to have agenda items as we get moving forward with Council on Aging. And Jack has been instrumental in being involved, and Jack's actually here.
Hi, Jack.
He has brought musical experience to the board, and he's actually done some, what do we call it, songbook of...
Right, we're trying to build a Stockbridge Senior Songbook. And so the first three chapters were opened up at Eaton Court quite successfully.
Yes.
Like karaoke sort of songbook, or?
Pardon me?
Karaoke sort of songbook, or?
No, I play.
Oh, okay.
Actually, we come up with a theme for each meeting, and we ask our residents to suggest songs in that theme, and then I build a set list and either have residents sit along or just do my thing, and they sit there and have to choose.
But just to be clear, you're not asking us to sing at the next meeting?
All right.
You want to audition up?
Right, exactly. Jamie, he has a lovely voice.
The audience members are also welcome.
So one of the, so some of the things, you know, just, Jack's been instrumental in bringing that program, which we started over the summer. We've got yoga going, we've got chair yoga going, we've got a trip already set up for the Senior Center, and in September, we're going to have a big opening.
Chuckie volunteered.
I would like to hear him audition people.
You're an acapella version.
Just kidding.
And Chuckie wants to go on the trip.
I'm of age. No, thank you, thank you.
He's been involved now for four months now?
Pardon me?
Been involved four months, right? Right from the, when we started, right?
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, about four or five months ago, so he's been, right from the start, involved in helping with the planning, with the working group. And we think he'd make an excellent member of the board, but it's up to you guys.
So I have, I have a suggestion.
Put it out first.
Do you have any questions? Does anybody in the public have any questions?
Just like to add that I'm more than music, I have a doctorate in public administration, and so I love to help get, be a part of civic organizations, and so I'm happy to be here.
What's the age limit to join?
Anybody can join. Most of our programs have ages.
Doctor in public administration?
Well, actually, it's officially an education from St. John's University. Yeah, but a lot of the work is...
Administration or education?
Both.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, educational leadership is a proper term.
All right, well, I've got just a question for the board, really a suggestion. I would like to suggest we waive, we usually announce openings when, and then for two weeks, and then let folks put their name in, but I'd like to waive that this time and just make a motion to appoint Jack.
I was going to make a motion anyways.
All right, well, then that's good. All right, so motion to appoint.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Look forward to next week, our two weeks.
I was going to ask if there was, Van had asked from VHB if there was any way to move him up in the agenda.
Oh, sure, we can do him next. Right? I mean, I'm, you know, the three alcohol, oh, we have Main Street Project, all right, sure, so why don't we, let's just check those, is there anybody from Chesterwood or Zucchini's or, because these will all be really quick, or the Camp Mackinac for the Pen Mass Challenge here? So it doesn't matter. Okay, so let's move Van up. So we're going to do that one next, which is the redesign of Main Street Project. Thank you.
He'll have the PowerPoint.
All right, yeah. Just bear with me one second, I'm going to pull up the PowerPoint. There it is. Can everyone see that? Yep.
Hi, my name is Van Kocouanakis, I'm project manager for VHB, and I'm going to discuss with you tonight the intersection improvements at Main Street, at South and Pine Streets. The goal for tonight's meeting is to review the project history, assessments we did, concepts, plans, key dates, review the preferred improvement plan, the 2020 interim striping plan, the shared streets improvements, and the final intersection design. And then at the end, we'll have a quick discussion about the next steps for public outreach. This is just a slide of the existing conditions. Here's the intersection of South and Pine at Main Street. You have crosswalks heading easterly along Main Street to the Town Hall on the right of your screen. So project history, we've done a planning and traffic study, we have reviewed crash data, performed field survey, developed various concepts, identified a preferred alternative, implemented interim striping improvements at the intersection. We initiated state highway coordination with an access permit, developed final plans for preferred alternative, and pursued a shared streets grant for part of the project, which I'll talk about in a little bit. Some key dates, 2018 in October, the initial planning study was provided to the town. May of 2019, the town, there was a town meeting which approved the funding for preliminary design. May of 2020, a public information meeting was held to discuss the project concepts. June of that year, 2020, the interim striping plan was prepared, and the town implemented it that summer. 2020, September, project limits changed where three crosswalks were added towards the Town Hall east of the intersection. Three, March 2021, preliminary plans were provided to the town. May of 2022, a shared streets grant was awarded for the three crosswalks, and then August 2022, the final design plans are 90% complete and on hold. So at one point, the initial study, we looked at a roundabout, and I'm just going to talk about roundabouts here for a few minutes. In 2018, in that planning study that we provided to the town, there was a concept for roundabout. That concept, the goal is to design it within the roadway layout, avoid all impacts to the monuments and fountains that was, are within that intersection. And that roundabout was, was prepared without any base mapping or survey or right-of-way locations. The survey, you know, a survey was needed to confirm a layout before Mastiot, before we went to Mastiot to review this. In 2020, a survey was completed, and we updated the design. So in doing so, we need to meet the current Mastiot standards. Deflection of entering vehicles was needed to be increased, splitter islands need to be raised to protect pedestrians, and to address design requirements, impacts outside the layout would be realized. So I'm going to show you the picture of the fur. This was submitted to the town in 2018. This was the planning study, included this concept. This was done on an aerial, as I mentioned, there was a, no base mapping done. It was fit in to try to fit within the right-of-way and avoid, you know, hitting the monuments or fountain. All the, the inner, the roundabout itself, the splitter islands are flush, meaning they can be drive over. The island in the middle, mountable. As you can see, like, you know, roundabouts yield condition, and the main line is almost like a straight-through shot, so it, it really required more deflection. So once we had a, you know, our survey developed and the layout included in the survey, we came up with a different concept. This concept has raised splitter islands, which protect the pedestrians. The island is raised in the middle with mountable, a mountable truck apron, and the corners also have mountable pavement for truck turning movements. There's a lot of trucks that utilize this intersection. As I mentioned, the design was designed with survey base mapping. This design meets the current regulations and design standards for Mastiot. This design, there was property impacts on all four corners. Utilizing this design, we incorporated shared use paths going all the way around to accommodate both bicycles and pedestrians. The fountain was impacted, and it also eliminated 27 parking spaces in front of the red line and across the street. So 2020, there was an interim striping plan. This is the plan, painted island in the middle, we kind of made painted, bumping out the islands utilizing paint, provided bike lanes within the intersection for both directions, both east and westbound on Main Street. Here are some photos of what was implemented. You can see the island and the bumpouts here, your bike lanes here, bike lane here. You know, there's big trucks that utilize this area. It's nice to see a bicyclist actually in the bike lane. Preferred improvements for the current project area. Here's our intersection improvements, and then this is the breakout that I discussed earlier about shared streets grant. The war, this grant was awarded to the town. The crosswalk just east of the intersection will be removed. The crosswalk further east will be relocated, so it's out of the driveway and further to the west. And then the crosswalk in front of the Town Hall will be a raised crosswalk. The preferred improvements for the intersection include traffic calming, narrowing the pavement, extending those curbs, replacing the interim painted islands with multiple decorative pavement, reconstruction to the crosswalks and pedestrian ramps, providing bicycle lanes again, and going to provide underground conduit and handholds, so the roadway doesn't have to get ripped up if any lighting wants to be added in the future. So this is the design. We pushed the road in a little bit here on the South, South Street, exiting the intersection. We also did at the other corners as well, just bumping it out, so the paths for the pedestrians are shorter. The islands on both sides are bumped out with curb, and then there's a little bit area that's mountable that goes out to the bike lanes. These areas can be mounted by trucks and/or cars. The island in the middle is mountable as well. Every bike lane's going from east to west in both directions. New pedestrian curb ramps at all crossing locations. This, this crosswalk here will be raised. So just to go over the shared streets, crosswalk, the improvements there, removing the crosswalk as discussed, east of the intersection from Main Street, shifting the crosswalk at Elm Street, moving it out of the driveway, shifting it to the west, reconstructing the pad ramps there, updating the crosswalk at the Town Hall, construct, construction of a raised crosswalk, reconstructing the pedestrian curb ramps, and as I mentioned, removing and eliminating the crosswalk to the west. Here's just some existing pictures of what the crosswalks look like today. This is the crosswalk that is just adjacent to South and Pine Street, just west of the intersection. As you can see, it's crosswalk leading into driveways with no pedestrian curb ramps. This location here is Elm Street. Again, it's another crosswalk that's leading into a driveway with no pedestrian curb ramp. And then this is a picture of the existing crosswalk at the Town Hall. This will be updated to have new pedestrian curb ramps, any accessible, and raising the crosswalk to providing us a speed hump to slow down the traffic and provide traffic calm. So this is just the three locations on a map as part of the, the shared streets grant. Crosswalk being removed, Elm Street crosswalk being relocated, and the crosswalk in front of the Town Hall being redesigned to be a raised crosswalk. Here is a rendering. I'm just, can you guys, is the photos on the side blocking the view, or no?
No, it's clear.
Okay, I wasn't sure if it was just on my, just on my screen or not. So this is what the intersection's going to look like. All new crosswalks, islands are extended on both sides, mountable, center island and extensions, which vehicles can drive over. We're going to be putting the bike lanes going east and west in each, for each direction. All new pedestrian curb ramps and sidewalks within this area, and areas for landscaping. Here you can see the crosswalks removed. Elm Street crosswalk is, moves to the west, some parking will be eliminated, I believe two parking spaces on each side, pedestrian curb ramps. The crosswalk is out of the driveway. And then a raised crosswalk in front of the Town Hall with new pedestrian curb ramps. For, the next slide is going to show a rendering of what's existing today, and as it could look like for the preferred alternative. We can go back and redo that.
The darker pavement should help.
I'm sorry.
It worked.
So this, you know, it's just a view from one of the intersection corners, and it just shows, you know, the striping, the mountable pavement areas, extension of the curb, the new sidewalks and ramps with the landscape. So anticipated project construction costs for the year 2022, the preferred intersection improvement, that's just at Main Street and South, Main Street, South Street, and Pine Streets, estimated $550,000. That includes conduit and handholds for future lighting. The crosswalk improvement, it's along Main Street, $175,000. A shared street grant was awarded for $135,000. Five years, this intersection's going to need to be repaved. The anticipated construction costs of just repaving the intersection is $150,000. And a roundabout today's value, not including property takings, reconstruction of the fountain or other hardscapes, is estimated $3 million. These are anticipated construction costs, our office estimates, and bids from contractors would be performed. So the project next steps, we're going to be working on preparing bid documents for the shared street crosswalks, advertise that project, go out to bid. Hope to have a public information meeting in the fall for the intersection of South, South and Pine Streets at Main Street. Like to use this presentation for the outreach meeting, and we're hoping to seek some feedback from the public on the intersection improvements. We'll prepare a handout for the public to identify the desired improvements. One would be do nothing, that'll cost still $150,000. The preferred intersection improvement, as mentioned, at $550,000, and there's also a roundabout $3 million. We'll evaluate the feedback and potentially pursue funding and approval at a town meeting. Any questions?
Excellent.
Van, can you just, Van, can you go back one slide?
Here.
Instead of do nothing, can you just make a note to say repave only?
Yes.
Or accurate.
We can change that.
Oh, it's do nothing. Why is it costing $150,000 now?
Start with you guys, comments or questions?
Thank you. I thought that was really clear. I just had a question. I don't know if it's germane to this conversation, but isn't there a crosswalk down by the church? But I don't know, it's not, it's Main Street, but it's, is it a real crosswalk? I don't know. Like meaning, it is a crosswalk, but I mean, it's not a part of this part, right?
Now, there was a crosswalk up by the 102 seven split, which, you know, I was going to mention it's out of the area, but it might not be a bad idea to make that raise because that's where we have a lot of speeders for, I mean, it's not.
Right.
So right now they're going to raise this one. And if we do this project, they're going to raise this one, create a speed bump from Main Street. Now, as you can see, the pedestrian crosswalks right now compared to driveways, which were identified in our ADA is that is not legal. It's dangerous to have crosswalks and exit into where a car could become right at somebody in a, in a crosswalk. So we did get a shared street grant and we're going to be able to address the crosswalks, but we still have to figure out what we're doing for the Main Street design. The one that is at Elm Street. We've got on the right, we've got town, town hall. Then we've got one at Elm Street where we're, which we're moving. Yeah, we have to shift it to get out of its, it exits right now into a driveway, which is not, yeah. No, I understand. I'd rather see the current, the proposed design. Yeah.
The proposed design, we're moving the crosswalk towards the west.
Yeah, I get that. So where, can we see the rendering of the proposed design?
Sure.
So we've got the first one there. Now is that one, is the second one from the right moved?
The one pointing at right here?
Yep.
Currently it's entering this driveway.
Okay, I see. I, I'm pretty far away. And the next one is one that's coming out, the one that goes kind of across to Lost Lamb.
That's going.
Yes, that's, that's being removed because that's actually entering a driveway on both sides.
Okay. And then the next one after that will be the one at the Episcopal Church. And the question I have for both you and eventually the, the audience is, is that too long a distance between basically Elm Street and Pine Street to go without a crosswalk?
I don't, I don't believe so. You have, this distance here is, is not that long. You could put this back, but you're going to remove quite a few parking spaces in doing so. But I don't, I don't think that that's too far of a walk to, to go in between. Typically.
No, I just, we do have a lot of folks who kind of go between the Main Street market or the country store, maybe go across the street and get like a, you know, baguette or whatever you sell at a French pastry shop and, 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 and obviously Minkler's is there. And I just wondered if we're sort of encouraging folks to, you know, cross outside of a crosswalk if we don't have a crosswalk there. And so I'm just throwing that out there.
Can you do it already occasionally?
You can have 10 crosswalks.
The, the main issue would be Patrick, you'd lose four additional parking places by shifting it that way.
Yeah, I mean, I would actually say the other side and then it might actually generate traffic through parts of the town towards the library that otherwise wouldn't see traffic. So, you know, like the candy store at the end by the library, for example, you'd have people coming, you know, going one way or the other to have to cross and so passing certain businesses along the way.
So let's all remember too, that unless it's physically inconvenient for you, that you need to come up here so people on Zoom can hear you. So, you know, in fact, anybody who wants to participate in this, you all can all come up if you want, if you want to be a back and forth thing, but it's important that the people who are here. No, we have two of them up here, don't we? So, but as long as you're in this vicinity, folks can hear you. Is anyone having a hard time hearing the participants on Zoom?
I'm not.
No.
No, you can't hear them or no, you're not having a problem?
I'm not having a problem.
You can hear them, just don't know who they are.
Right. So, all right. So the very least we all have to introduce ourselves. Anyways, so Matt, what was the, go back to.
Yeah, Manchester, five church street. I was just saying that actually some of the businesses along on both sides of the current crosswalk that crosses over to Minkler and, and Lost Lamb might actually appreciate having people walk all the way down to the end of the commercial district and cross to pass those businesses and, and also see some other things along the way. I don't think anybody who is, you know, has difficulty walking personally would be, you know, wanting to cross right there at Lost Lamb anyway, just because there's two, you know, cars are going too fast and it's a pretty dangerous spot to cross at present. So I think anybody who would be crossing that would have, you know, be in a wheelchair or something like that, personally would be probably crossing it at the two remaining sidewalks in any event.
And so is it your sense that removing the one in the center can work or not work?
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a good idea personally.
Okay.
I support it.
Good. Okay, so. But anybody on Zoom want to comment?
I want to comment Shirley, Elm Street.
Come back Shirley.
I'm sorry, but everybody uses that little intersection crosswalk. Car, people, they come in and park from town and want to get on the other side to go all the way up and down. It's discouraging for people and they're going to, they're going to cross without the crosswalk.
And to put another crosswalk there, you think it would cost us four spaces? I would, Van, you would probably be better, but if we just. Add at least four, possibly more.
I would say at least four, depending on the side that's chosen on each side of the driveway and you'll probably lose shade trees as well. Because where the crosswalk is moved to, you need to put in an ADA accessible ramp. It'll take up space. So if we were to go to the right of the screen, I could see a shared, a shade tree on both the north and south side. So you, you know, you'd lose some trees. You definitely lose.
Give the ability to blow up the screen that you're showing now? Because just that area?
So we have the capability, if we go with this design and we find out that we need that crosswalk, we could always add it down the road, correct? You can. I mean, it's, there's, the crosswalk is not that far away at the intersection, but you can, you could add it later back.
I mean, if we try this concept and it doesn't work, it won't be a big issue for us to add a sidewalk down the road.
Hi, quickly.
Hold on a sec. Uh, this is Christine.
Do you want to follow up on your?
I, I just want one additional point that maybe we should all know, which is that Monday's, which is Purchase Hall's Garage will be opening in a couple of weeks, I believe, and then having, using that as a showroom. So that where the crosswalk, the driveway that goes into, is that the one on St. Paul, the St. Paul's preschool side or is it the one on the other side of Minkler? I'm just trying to orient myself because there will be a lot of traffic just to the right of Lost Lamb, to east of Lost Lamb, I suspect, but a lot of people will be driving into Hall's Garage to go to that showroom. So I just want to make sure we're clear on kind of where that is walking into.
That's where the sidewalk is, into that driveway.
Yeah, so just to clarify, here is this the Monday, the Hall's Garage driveway?
The Hall Garage driveway.
Yeah, so there's going to be, I suspect there'll be a lot of cars.
It's on the other side.
Yeah, that's right. It's, I, it's on the side.
I'm sorry.
It's at St. Paul's preschool.
Yes.
But I'm just saying, there, there may be more traffic than expected recently here also.
Yeah. We have Anne Rabbinowitz. Hi, Anne. Christine, were you first?
It doesn't matter. Anne can go. I can, I can add my two cents out there. That's fine.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not in favor of taking away that middle crosswalk. I think there's going to be jaywalking. I myself would probably be jaywalk along there. How much is the crosswalk at the town hall used? Do we need that crosswalk? Could the Elm Street crosswalk be moved further west? And maybe the middle crosswalk, crosswalk also moved further west so that we have three crosswalks? Do we need the town hall one? And also the intersection, that oblong is just, I've tried driving around it. It just doesn't work. It's too long. It's, it's not enough, it's not circular enough. And pushing out the pavement takes away too much space. I don't see any point in doing it unless you want everyone to be going over those curbs all the time. It's just not enough space and it's too, too violent of a turn to get around that long oblong. And that's all I'm saying.
So just a couple of points that Van can point out that part of this is that we've identified these crosswalks are dangerous. They're not compliant and potential liability issue because you can't have a crosswalk empty into a driveway that is. No, I get it. But, but to Anne's point though, the, the one I think on Main Street that is probably the least used is the one that currently is sort of dysfunctional right in front of the main town hall entrance. Could we basically eliminate that one and get some spaces back because there are spaces over there? And then bring that one somewhere in here and for cost of spaces, maybe we would net out to no spaces.
I, I don't, I have to go back and look, but I don't think we're losing any spaces at the town hall.
Well, there's, there's parallel parking spaces or just like, you know, kind of a pulling spaces. I know there's, I parked there today, you know. So we are loo-, go ahead Christine.
Yeah. So I just wanted to add in, because what I was going to say is really the requirement from MUTCD is you can't put a parking spot within 20 feet of a crosswalk so that people can see people that are in the crosswalk. They're not hidden behind a car and they come out, you know, unseen. So where you have a paral- parallel parking space, you usually lose like one on either side. In this instance where you have the angled parking, I'm afraid you might lose, you know, more like six or eight because you'll, you have to have 20 feet clear either side of the crosswalk.
And in other towns where the parking spaces go right up to the crosswalk, is that because they're before this new rule?
Yeah, I think they're just illegal. It's one of the biggest problems we have when we do a project in a downtown area is that people are like, oh, we're losing all those spaces. And we have to say, well, you know, only this many were legal. So they're basically just not legal spaces.
And what, what if you put a, like, push the pavement out by the crosswalk so people can like stand on a curb further out in the street so people can see them, but there's a curb to protect them?
Yeah. And we do do that in a lot of instances, but it doesn't take away the requirement.
So when I said earlier that, you know, we're not losing any spaces here, it's because this space wasn't really legal in the beginning. Because it was so close to your crosswalk.
Yeah. So you are losing one existing space there.
But it wasn't really a space because a crosswalk was there. Or it shouldn't have been a space is what I'm saying.
And, and, and I think also, because I keep hearing this phrase and I don't want to talk, correct me Van or anybody else that, but when doing, looking at doing the walkability and the smart street design programs that were offered years ago and going to those training classes, one of the things they talked about was you get the term jaywalking thrown around a lot. Jaywalking is not illegal. It's, there, there is no crime of jaywalking. It's a term put in by the auto industry years ago to get people off the streets. But one of the things is, is to remember is that crosswalks are where the town is saying it's safe to cross. Anywhere there's not a crosswalk, people are making their own judgment to decide if it's safe to cross or not. So that's something.
We're saying Massachusetts is not illegal because in places like California, you have to use the crosswalks, right?
It, for most of the coun-, I, I don't believe it's illegal anywhere, jaywalking. Most small rural towns don't have a single crosswalk in them, some of them. So basically you're saying anywhere else in Stockbridge, you can't cross a road? Of course you can cross a road. What we have here is just mainly the issue of we need to balance, as was said, we could be losing four at minimum, but up to eight cross, eight parking spots if we were to take that crosswalk and make it legal. Are you more comments? That was the biggest issue, right Chuck? When it was first looked at. We didn't want to lose all those crosswalks. Any more comments from the public? Matt?
Yeah, I was also saying, I think the raised sidewalk, the furthest east one, it does benefit from slowing cars down at that spot. Because I think if you take that one out, you know, cars are going to continue to go fast all the way up into, you know, past Elm Street. So that's really, I think, where you need this slowing impact of that raised speed bump.
Good. Anyone on Zoom have any more comments?
Patty Kaya?
Patty, hi Patty.
Hi, um, mine is, my comment is not about the crosswalks, but I wanted to concur with the, the speaker who mentioned the length of that, I, I, the, the median that's been painted onto the, where the proposed rotary, sorry, I'm doing a really bad job of explaining this, by the Red Lion Inn, that intersection. I just wanted to concur that I actually agree completely with what she said about the length of that painted median. It seems impractical for the turning at that intersection. I was, I was literally saying that today when I drove through there.
Right. So the idea is to make it, you know, sort of from the center, a little bit shorter on each side.
Yeah, that, we can do that. Let's not, because that's going to be like, for the future condition, that's going to be mountable.
Yeah. I understand. What do you guys think of that though, before we give Van that direction? I'm talking to this law court.
Sorry, shorting it?
Yeah.
Well, I think it's designed to make the traffic go around it to make the intersection safer and keep that 45 degree angle from people coming across. That's the whole issue, that's making this intersection condensed so that people know where the cars are going and not doing that big angle across. You shorten that island up, I think it's going to kind of continue some of that problem.
No, I remember when I, because I come down this way a lot, you know, taking that, that left from the north. Initially you kind of can't keep off the lines, but once you get used to it, for normal people, a few times and meet 30 or 40, I actually got the hang of it and, you know. I don't have any problem with it being that length, but if you want to shorten a little bit, you know, we should decide now.
And I would defer to the engineers because I'm not an engineer nor do I do this kind of work. So I feel that I would do that.
Ben, do you think this is optimized for what we're trying to accomplish?
So we've actually made some minor tweaks and adjustments to like the final design. Like we've run templates for passenger cars for this to work. So it, it does work if you make the movement correctly and you do it in a slowed and controlled manner. So it, it does work today with our turning templates that we've done for this. But like we've made some small, we've made some smaller adjustments from final design a little bit because it's going to be a little bit different from the paint and the mountable material that we're going to be using. So the mountable material, the right, the driver's going to hear it when they go over it. So they'll probably like learn how, like the local drivers will learn, you know, that they, they don't want to go on that. So they'll, they'll slow down and they'll make their, their movement more efficient.
Ben, can you show that, the other plan, not the painted one, the new?
Sure. This or do you want the colored one?
No, that was it. Because I just wanted to see if it, it looks more slight. Like when I look at this versus what's in the paint, it does look like it's not as tight as.
Yeah, we, we changed it up a, a little bit, like I said. Like the radius have changed for the mountable area. I think this island, we shifted a little bit towards the, the west. I think we opened up for this movement a little bit. I don't really have a dimension to, to match with the other.
You go back there for one second.
Right turn out. It looked like that, that the.
I'm just trying to go back to the. Sorry, hang on. I'm going the wrong way. So that.
On South Street, like that line is real, like in the lane kind of. So I don't think.
I think that, yeah, I think you're shortened a little bit from the east just to make sure that, you know, that, that left lane coming from the south north. You know, it looks like you're actually in the, in kind of the, you know. Yeah, if you look at coming from the north, you know, the top left, you can see a natural turn. You know, it seems kind of like in that left lane that you actually run into the edge of the thing.
Are you referring to here?
Or, yeah, yeah, there. It just seems like on the east side, you know, could go in another foot or something, just to me, but...
And I did think it looked better on the mountable, when I was looking at the mountable plan, it didn't look quite as abrupt.
So this here, if you look at where these islands are, the painted islands are, and if you go to the latest plan, we've actually, we brought those in, considered a lot more. And then I believe this island has shifted a little bit.
Yeah, so I think that you're going to find the turning movements are better.
Good. We have Christine Rasmussen has her hand up.
Christine, hi, how are you doing?
Good. How are all of you doing?
Good.
I have questions coming up from Sargent Street on 102. It looks like the intersection where we normally stop is now going to have a crosswalk as well as the stop sign. And it's unclear on my computer how the left turn people and the people are going straight are going to be divided so that you can sort of figure out when people who are coming from my side of town can get onto the intersection. And I understand, I have a very small screen, so it's somewhat hard to see. But I thank you for just thinking about that.
I'm not 100% sure what you're, where you're coming from.
If you're coming up from 102, staying on 102 through town, there's a stop sign across the street where people turn onto 7. There's a stop sign and we need to stop if we're coming up. But it's confusing because people coming from Route 7 and wanting to stay on 7 are making a turn there. And right now, there's two lanes and one lane goes straight and the other lane are people making the turn. And I'm not for sure how that's going to be reconfigured with also having a crosswalk that you're going to have to pay attention to. Does that make it clearer?
Are we in the same area?
Yeah, I think yes. Yeah, on South Street, yeah.
Christine, top, north, southeast and west. Use those terms. You're coming from, you're coming from the west and you're concerned about people entering that intersection from the south, from Route 7, coming up from Route 7 to the south. You're concerned about them making that left-hand turn with you guys coming from the west? And is it going to be too confusing for those people coming from the south to make that left-hand turn with the crosswalk there? And are they going to hit somebody?
Yes.
We have a crosswalk now, if you're coming from the north and you're going east, that already exists and you just got to keep your eyes open. That's been there forever, you know?
Right, but there hasn't been a crosswalk from Riggs, the side that Riggs is on, across.
So Christine, you're saying you're coming out of your road, you're heading east and you want to take a right to 7 South. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So you're worried about the stop sign and the crosswalk and how you're going to make that right-hand turn heading south on 7?
Or if you're coming north and you want to go up Prospect Hill?
Maybe Christine can stop then and show us. We're having trouble following.
I mean, those crosswalks are, the only new crosswalk I believe is the one on the west side. The other crosswalks are all there already.
That's what I thought.
This is the new crosswalk.
That's the only new crosswalk.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to go to the existing plan. There's no crosswalk here now.
But the other ones are there.
But the other ones are...
The other ones are there.
But I, I'm just wondering how that crosswalk will work for cars, for cars heading up Prospect Hill. Are you going to have a real lot of congestion with the new crosswalk?
Yeah, and I think, if you don't mind, if I can jump in for a second. I think the whole intent of this project is right now, you've got all that big wide pavement. So people can drive really fast through here. You know, you're taking your turn and you're scooting off where you're going. With the new design, with all these areas kind of bumped out, everything feeling a little tighter. You know, if you have a raised crosswalk on one approach, hopefully this whole intersection, the speeds are going to be a lot slower. So you're going to have more time to make your movements. And, you know, again, people aren't going to be flying around the corner where you're going to have to worry about it. Everything will feel smaller, not such a wide open pavement. And that'll keep speeds down, which gives you more time to react. So if you see someone in a crosswalk, you'll be able to stop.
And we're comfortable with all the slowing that we're not going to back traffic up all the way to like, you know, Berkshire Theatre Room or something?
No, because you're not really adding stop signs, right? New stops. So people won't be stopping, they just won't be going, trying to go 40 through here.
They're going to have to go slower. This crosswalk here is going to be raised. So the vehicles that are heading in the westbound direction will definitely be going through this intersection slower, but they won't have to come to a complete stop. There's no stop sign being put there.
So it shouldn't...
So it's going to give, it's going to give this person that's coming southerly down Pine and making a right, they're going to be able to see the vehicle slowing down here, then they're going to turn their head and look and there's going to be a crosswalk here. And it's going to give them plenty of time to see a pedestrian crossing the roadway and for them to make their movement. You're going to have to look in every direction, but, you know...
There should be anyways.
Yeah, you should, you should be, but what I'm getting at is, is this is, this should be slowing down the vehicles on the main line because of, one, that pavement is not as wide. So it kind of, kind of like pulls the vehicles in where they, you know, they can't, they don't have all this space to go around other vehicles. It's going to slow them down and then you have a raised crosswalk that, you know, they're going to have to slow down to go up and over that.
All right, a couple more comments. Matt? Oh, I'm sorry, Shirley. Is that Shirley? Who is that? Yes.
What's the necessity for the crosswalk on that other side? Nobody uses that.
It gives, it gives the opportunity for pedestrians on all four sides of the intersection to cross.
There's not many people that cross that way. That's why, yeah, there's no crosswalk. That's why, why would they? Where are they coming from?
There's sidewalks on both sides of Main Street in this area. And there are parking...
And what's the, so they can't walk to the other side, to the other side of the intersection? That's not very far across, however.
Yeah, okay.
I think the one thing that they would not think about, or two that I would just say, is maybe the reason to think about not having that crosswalk is that probably legally, but a lot of people will, you'll have two cars there right now. You know, you'll have one car turning right onto 7, so they're going east on 102. And then when they hit the intersection, they take a right. And sometimes you'll have two cars waiting. And with the extra crosswalk, you'll probably have, you have that extra curb cut. I don't know if they'll be able to fit two cars. And that would potentially slow it down because you have one car going, continuing on onto 7. And then you have one car trying to go right. And if you go in one, you know, in single file, I think you're going to have a lot of cars backed up right there.
Can I say something?
Anne Rabidowitz?
Sure, sure Anne. Hi Anne.
Hi. When you're coming from the south, turning west, there's a lot of things to watch for. And adding another crosswalk is just going to make another thing to watch for, like there's so much to look out for. And then a question, are there still going to be two lanes coming from the south and coming from the west?
Yeah, we're not changing any of the lane configuration at the intersection.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Yeah, we always go, no, what's up?
Yeah, it's Tom Williams. I'm sorry, I had a quick comment.
Okay.
Only because, and Chuck, he could probably back me up on this. We're getting through as a first responder in the town, we're having a lot of issues, obviously, on the weekends, getting around the town. I'm listening and I'm thinking about the Venturi and I'm thinking about slowing down. But there has to be some provision for emergency vehicles to get through. We had a call on Cherry Street last week, guy got stung with 10 bee stings. The Berkshire Sheriff's Dispatch tried to avoid town, town is blocked, heavy traffic. You know, guys are driving around everywhere trying to get places. I live on Iceland, Pine Hill, you know, trying to get up to Pine Street, all these places where we're trying to run all the time. We have to go through that poor intersection. And while I totally understand it, I just wish you'd take a little bit in your traffic studies to understand the movement of emergency vehicles. And people have to get a place where they can get out of our way so we can get to where we have to be as quickly as possible.
That's the good thing about what we're doing at this intersection is all the, what's painted now, like those areas that we're extending to slow down the traffic, that's going to be flush with the pavement. So your vehicle's going to be able to maneuver, the emergency vehicles will be able to maneuver over that.
Okay, we just got to get there, you know, you understand, right? So we're backing up to Firehouse from the intersection sometimes on the weekends and it's very difficult. And I just want you to take it into consideration, that's all. And I'm sure, I'm sure the chief has something to say. I didn't mean to speak for him. As a, I'm in almost every day.
Okay. What's that? Anything else?
No, that's good. We'll consider that, but it's like any other busy street. You go on the center, the center island is, the trucks will go over that, you know, down the middle. I don't see any major issue with emergency vehicles. It probably does improve it a little bit. But many times, we go down the center lane, let traffic both ways. You got to do what you got to do to get there.
And I only have one other thing, Ben. Can we touch base with the Street Lighting Committee and the Planning Board just related to the specific fixtures, the poles that we plan specifying, or the fixtures?
Lighting's out.
We're not doing the lighting.
Oh.
Yeah. So the only thing we are going to do is, as part of the Shared Streets Grant, we're going to run conduit and handholds so you don't have to do the work again. The conduit and handles will be in place if the town ever decides to do lighting. You won't have to rip up Main Street or any of the side streets.
Okay, good. Answers the question.
Good question, but yes.
And any other comments, going once, going twice? All right, so let's just talk now. Do we, are we in agreement, this is the direction we want to go in? Are there slight modifications that you want Michael to work on? What do you want to do? This is your project.
I think we should go with what we have. If we find down the road that side walk in the middle is necessary, we'll...
Take out some spaces.
We can take out some spaces and add that as needed instead of doing it now and not need it. Spend the money if you could always add that, I believe, you know, the town decide that. But I believe it as is and have another meeting and then...
Now, we're going to talk about this larger, you know, presentation meeting that's with just this on the agenda.
Just this on the agenda.
And do you have a, so first of all, do you want to endorse the design or do we need that or are we just all set?
If the committee's ready to move with this design forward, then we'll set up, then we can coordinate with Van and figure out a date to hold a meeting just on this to get as much public feedback as we can.
And then do a final endorsement then. All right. So do you guys have a date in mind for that meeting?
Probably looking at maybe the, either the last meeting September or first meeting October.
No, I think we're going to do a special meeting, not my bar meetings.
Oh, it has to be a separate?
Doesn't have to be, but I thought we were going to try...
But if we're going to, I'm trying to get a lot of encouragement, a lot of feedback, take notes. I think, Ben, you said have something where people can comment.
Yeah, we can work on having like a handout where, you know, whoever attends can make a choice and, you know, provide their input.
I would like to suggest that we do it Monday, the 19th, with the idea of a special town meeting on Monday, I'm sorry, Monday, the... Monday, November, oh wait, that's Election Day. How about something like Monday, the 19th with a town meeting, you know?
What month, September or October?
So, are we still planning, let me ask you a question, you still want to do this as a special town meeting?
I think we discussed that probably. It's just that a regular town meeting might be a very long.
Yeah, so I mean, so let's plan on, let's work backwards and try to do it on the 10th, the presentation, and the 24th for the town meeting.
Which month?
And the October 10th and October 24th.
So let's pause on the second.
Yeah.
Say the feedback we get is we need to incorporate some things. Just let's focus on a time for the feedback, a larger meeting first. Because say we get some...
Move into September then.
Make some changes.
Then let's give them more time. We could do, we could do the special meeting on either the 12th or the 19th of September and then leave that date of October 24th for the town meeting.
September, surely.
Yeah.
Just do it on the 19th.
We want to do September 19th. We'll do a Monday night meeting on September 19th for the public presentation on that.
September, we need to...
Can you guys meet on September 19?
I can get back to Michael tomorrow or next week, just to...
Or as an alternate, the 12th through the 26th.
Well, you could, Patrick, you can call the, I can get some dates from him, get back, we can get feedback from the board of what days and then we want, we could get a publication of it.
Okay. I understand. I'm just saying that I would like it to be a Monday because we don't have things going on generally. Actually, the 19th, we do have campus of Bog, but yeah, one of those three Mondays outside of Labor Day in September.
Yeah, like I said, I just want to check with Matt Chase.
And actually, the 12th or the 26th would be better. We do have a meeting scheduled for the 19th.
The 26th is a holiday.
Monday, December, September 26th is a holiday?
It's a holiday for some people.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Take a week of the 26th.
Let's, I just...
Just figure out a date, just figure out a date.
Right, and we can call a meeting and we're still going to have to put it out there because we're not going to know.
All right.
I'll coordinate with all three of you to schedule a date with BHB2 and I'm sure it works for everyone. All right.
All right, thank you and thanks everyone for your comments.
Thanks, man.
Bye, take care.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's do a couple of quick things. FY22 Reserve Account Transfer.
So I have the reserve account transfer in your packet. It was approved last night at the Finance Committee meeting. And, sorry, I'm just pulling up my notes. So the first, we have two transfers. Transfer one is a transfer between department lines. So we're something that the Finance Committee and the SLAC board can approve. So we're looking to move from the health insurance line, $62,000 to cover highway machinery repairs. Run, and then we have water department, we have town office, and we have sewer department. These are just internal transfers. There's just moving money from one account to another that the SLAC board and Finance Committee can do. You know, I will call attention like I did to the Finance Committee that between the highway machinery line, $62 over, and then the vehicles that are put about transfer number two is $25,000. But we already addressed that because we upgraded the fleet down it. We understood that. Most of these repairs were self-brought on because the equipment had gotten sold. You know, I've said before that one storm right here, you had three of your five pieces of equipment down during a storm, which is never a good thing. You know, looking at that, if we had continued these costs, we could have been looking at $80,000 of overruns annually, so... So by upgrading the fleet, we should get back to our normal funding and of repairs. Most of the vehicles will be under warranties, we're getting the extended warranties out to seven years, right, Hugh?
Yeah, that's what we're projecting to put in our summer repair budget, to sort of the cost of extended warranties.
So we should be minimizing these accounts, so there shouldn't be a reoccurring of that. Transfer number two, there's a couple items, one was the retirement at the end of the year, it came in late. Should have caught that, but didn't, we did adjust this year, so that's a one time thing. There was a question of snow and ice, it was over last year, 16, this year was over 18. One thing about snow and ice is once you increase it, you can never lower it. It's an interesting little piece, if you want to be able to carry it over on the tax rate. So remember, snow and ice is one article you don't have to address with an end of the year transfer. You can let it ride on to the following year taxes, and they do that because you never truly know what the cost of a winter could be. But it's one of those things. Computer technology, we did increase the computer technology fund because the year before, for whatever reason, two years before, the town cut it from 150 to 100. And I'm not sure why, because looking back, the costs were higher. Didn't pick up on it because there were transfers to cover at the end of the year, so that's something we're correcting. So what we're doing is moving 148,000 of reserves to cover the overruns in different lines and the, moving the various accounts on transfer one. It's all money transferred within, already raised through taxation, there's no increased in taxes, nothing like that. It's just clearing up our books at the end of the year. So at this point, I'm asking that the board of selectmen concur with the finance committee and approve the transfers.
And this is, a second real small, Michael, this is like basically FY20, this is, these are obviously numbers that are over from last year.
Yeah.
But we're not paying for it with this year's reserve.
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
Last year's reserve, this is just cleaning up our books for the end of the year. You have until September 30th, you have to get all your grant money in and everything to close, you have to get all your bills in by July 15th, you have to close your books by September 30th, when you have to account for all grants, everything else, we've gotten all the grants in for the Larry Rock Bridge, Avoc Road Bridge. We've cleaned up the budget, these are some items, overall, the budget is still returning, I believe it's close to 800,000. And we undervalued receipts, so again, I'm still anticipating a very sizable increase in the free cash for next year.
Okay, and so, and so, you know, at Jay's finance committee meeting yesterday, I think Georgia asked about whether we would put an item on the town warrant in the spring related to transferring money that would come from the general fund back to the high water sewer fund?
Yes, since we're moving, so in the past, the town has recouped from the water and sewer account the amount of money that was transferred at the end of the year. Because the only reserve account we have to do this is this one. And so, yes, we can place those items to restore that money, and that will come back as free cash the following year.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, I've got no problem with this, so I make a motion that we approve transfer number one between departments.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I make a motion, we approve transfer number two, which are transfers between departments.
From the reserve fund.
From the reserve fund.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, now they're going down. Okay, let's see, we've done this one, we've done this one. You want to do the one day alcohol licenses, tell us about zucchinis. Or I'm sorry, the Chesterwood wedding, just standard one day alcohol license. So make a motion, we approve the alcohol license for Chesterwood.
Second.
Any comment about Chesterwood weddings or alcohol licenses? Okay, we're hearing none.
Aye.
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 Take action on one day alcohol license for zucchinis, I have a motion.
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
Any comment on zucchinis one day alcohol license? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Take action on one day alcohol permits for Pan Mass Challenge, this is the one that's going to the camp, right?
Yes.
It's really cool there, you've got like 500 kids coming in and spending the night in tents there, yeah, whatever.
I have my kids who want alcohol.
What?
They need alcohol.
They're not kids, kids, you know, they're young adults, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Motion approve that one?
Yes, I made a motion.
Second.
Any comment on the Pan Mass Bike Challenge? No. All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Do you want to award the Pump Street Project?
So where the Pump Street Projects went up to bid, you have in front of you the sheets, so.
Up Street.
Oh, Park Street.
Up Street.
What did I say, Pump Street? Park Street, Pump Station, sorry, sorry. So the low, this is the bid tabulation sheet, increase the.
Yeah, we saw that, I didn't get any of this.
Should be right in here, I put a couple I heard page. JL Raymakers, a little bidder at 849,000, this is the one that we went out to bid in the spring and it come in at 1.1. We went back and reworked the bid and then went out again, we only had one bidder last time. We ended up with three bidders this time, JL Raymakers was low. We have 920,000 set for the project, so that leaves us about 70,000 in contingency funds. So I'm asking the board's approval for me to authorize, to award the bid to JL Raymakers and Son.
Any comments from public? All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, we stopped the bid.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, congratulations, Mr. Rainmakers, or whatever your name is. Excellent, all right, on to the last thing, oh no, second to last thing, Project Update Soldier Monument.
You have in front of you a little drawing showing, and I was going to put it up on the screen, but it's not. Let's see if I can open it up again, I have it open. Just to show people, so what you have in front of you is the site plan for the work at the Soldier's Monument. And what they're going to, they're going to be able to put everything up onto the, up onto the grass. So the nice thing about that is it won't have anything out. Here, I think I got it now, so I can put it up, yep, there we go. So now I got to go to share screen, sorry. So what they'll be doing is, you have the monument, they're going to be doing the monument work, it'll be beginning in mid to late September, and they're going to be putting up jersey barriers to protect this site. They're putting, they'll be putting all their equipment scaffolding around the monument itself and then doing the work this fall before this winter sets in. So this has been a project a long time in the making and we're finally to the point. Allegorn is the company that's doing the work, and like I said, I just wanted you to be aware of it. We've already reviewed it, I reviewed it with police and fire, made sure they were comfortable with it. And the main thing is everything's up off the grass, but it will make for a little while, they have to have site protection by OSHA, so they have to put up jersey barriers and some things, and secure the site. And then everything will be cleaned back up and gone once.
This one where they're, they're basically taking the type of stone that is coming off and they're regluing it sorts, right?
And then they're cleaning the bronze, it's a cleaning and restoration project.
Okay.
I just wanted people to be aware that that will be happening as they see that.
That's forever.
And then how long will it last?
This fall, it'll be completed this fall.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, and that leaves us with the Appointing of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Did you guys have a chance to review the candidates? Okay, do you want to?
Well, they're all excellent.
They're all great.
So.
Do you want to do a rundown, or do you want me to do a rundown, or how do we want to do this?
Because the public, does the public know?
I'll do, I'll do an overview.
Just, or just say their names, I guess.
Well, so the Affordable Housing Trust Fund has seven positions on this new, this new board that we've created as part of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund that the town authorized two years ago and funded in the last two fiscal year. We collected, well, before we talk about the names, we have assigned it the task of managing the housing production plan, which is a year-long consulting project that will involve selecting a consultant from, what, we have three or four choices now, and then coming up with a group from this group that we appointed tonight to manage that project in conjunction with, you know, liaison or just help from the select board and planning board. The housing production plan must be approved by the planning board, the select board, and the state of Massachusetts. Though the thinking is that it would be kind of owned or, 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 you know, managed, if you will, by the Affordable Housing Trust Fund team. So we received, with the thought that because the select board and planning board have to approve this upcoming plan, that, you know, we initially, and I believe currently believe that a member of the select board and of the planning board should have one each of the seven seats. That leaves seven candidates who put their name in. We've got Jay Bukowski in the audience, we have Mark Mills, who actually sat on the group that helped review Donna Town Council's work in preparing the plan. And then we had five candidates submit their interest in serving. We have Ranny Warner, who lives full-time on 183, in a very nicely renovated home. Actually, it was Ned's mother's home, for those of you, that house there, for those of you who live in town, no. Ranny was a developer in Boston for many, many years and has sat on bank boards, or at least one bank board, I believe, at Waymouth Bank or some bank in eastern Massachusetts. We have Jan Ackerman, Jan is the former, they don't call this, but she's the equivalent of this Chief Financial Officer of Yale University. She is retired, she now is a part-time owner living on Avoc Road in Stockbridge. Then we had Renee Fitz, Renee Fitz is the one candidate that constructs June Wolf, the woman who manages Construct, which manages Pinewood, has recommended Renee Fitz to join the board. Renee is a renter, the only renter on the list, and Renee was one of the first to get her name in and brings kind of a, she's self-described as housing challenge, brings kind of a perspective of, you know, you know, having a near and dear to her heart kind of approach. We then also got an application or a submission from a gentleman named Don Eaton. Don lives on Church Street, he's currently on the board of the Community Development Corporation, which builds affordable housing in Great Barrington, based in Great Barrington, I believe countywide. Very nice man, and has obviously relative board experience. And then the last candidate, and also the last one to submit a request, is Selena Lamb. And Selena is a Williams graduate who lives here in Stockbridge, and a wonderful woman who had a lot of great ideas when we talked to her. And basically, like I said, like everyone said, we've got a whole bunch of great candidates, and, and, and that's the layout. Now, to frame it just a little bit, this is, this is an organization of board with a fiduciary responsibility to manage town money. This is an independent board that is trust, that will manage this trust fund. So, so in, in working with, with the prospective candidates, there was a primary focus on folks who had experience, you know, at the board level, senior, you know, sort of executive experience, but not, 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 you know, to the, it doesn't have to be exclusively, but I think that, you know, we're talking about prioritizing projects, helping to write a strategic plan around housing and managing money of the town and prioritize how to spend that, that this board, you know, that has, has a bit more due diligence as required in a point yet. And that's kind of what I got, you want to say?
And you hear Liz Wheeler's name mentioned.
Oh, I mentioned the select board and the planning board, oh, well, Jamie has put her name in, sorry, and Liz Wheeler from the planning board has put her name in, so that rounds it out to nine. I said right at the beginning, I thought that the, the select board and planning board never.
Yeah, we didn't say any names, so.
I didn't say any names.
No, it's fine.
I'm getting old, I'm not keeping all my head, yeah. All right, so I would like to make a motion that we begin by appointing Jamie Manassi and Liz Wheeler to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Do we have to make a motion?
I've just made a motion, yes. Unless you'd rather do it a different way.
It's up to you guys.
Well, I mean.
So you have Jamie.
Yeah, that's, you know, because the primary thing these folks are working on is the housing production plan the first year, and it must be approved by the planning board and the select board. I think it's really important that we have a strong liaison with those boards. Now, we have to stagger the terms, so we could make those terms, for example, like the one-year terms if you want, and then if folks get too busy and don't want to, they could get reappointed next year, or they could drop off so other folks could serve. But at least in the first year, I believe this housing production plan should be, you know, we should, should have the select board representative. I'm sorry, what?
If you want to approve the lanes of the committee before you.
No, actually, I want to do this one, I want to start with.
Before the terms or before the?
We can, we can deal with the terms.
Terms after.
Yeah.
So I'm okay with, I'll second to Jamie and the Liz.
All right, so all those in favor of Jamie and Liz joining the Affordable Housing Trust? All right.
Aye.
All right. Okay.
And I would like to see Jay.
What?
Yeah, well now we got, we got five folks who are new, two folks who have experience, they're, all seven are great.
Oh, I mean, this is amazing, that we got such great candidates, I mean, it's a nice problem to have.
Yeah, yeah.
So I like to see Jay Bukowski and Don Eaton, Ranny Warner, Selena Lamb. Does that give us?
Four.
Two, three, four, five, six, and Janet. What? And Janet Ackerman.
Jay, Selena, Jan Ackerman, and Dan Eaton. All right, now that leaves off, that leaves off.
Oh, we, no, we didn't vote on him yet.
We haven't voted on anybody else, yes. So if the slate is Janet, who is the, you said Janet or Ranny?
I said Jay Bukowski.
Yeah.
Don Eaton.
Yeah.
Rainy Warner, Selena Lamb, and Janet Ackerman, is that enough? Is that enough?
No, Selena, Jan, and Don Eaton.
Five, six, seven, that makes seven, right?
Yes, so then, and then, you know, we, we do have Mark Mills, though he does already serve on ZPA, certainly he has a position in town. And that leaves, you know, the only, the only question I have is that it does leave off the one candidate that Construct asked us to appoint, who manages Pinewood.
Yeah. This is probably an important position to have on there.
Who manages?
She doesn't manage.
No, June Wolf manages Pinewood, she, she put a letter of recommendation in, a person called me.
She's a project developer.
Yeah, she, she, you know, Construct is the project manager.
I thought the way you said it, I thought.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
June Wolf, whatever.
No, 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 my mistake.
I don't know what the title was, I mean, probably better, but whatever. June Wolf had recommended Renee Fitz. Now Renee acknowledged in her, in her interview, when she came and talked to us, that, yeah, she's new to town and, you know, she possibly might not stay in town a long time, and, you know, but I, yeah. She is the only one that June brought up.
She made a comment not staying in town?
But she wasn't sure, she's like, she's like sort of new to town, she's a renter, not an owner. Yeah.
Probably.
I like this slate personally, don't get me wrong.
No, I, I mean, it's part, I mean, they're all good, she's thinking about that.
And, and, and the other thing, the other thing with Ray Fitz is she did offer to volunteer in other areas and she could try to figure out some project work that the trust fund folks could, you know, could work with her on. I mean, she doesn't have to actually be a trustee to volunteer for the board, you know?
Or can she be an alternate, or is that the right word?
No, no, there's no alternates, no. No, no alternates, no.
Okay.
There's no alternates in the trust.
Okay. Sorry.
So do you wanna go with these five? We have a motion? Does everybody in the public have a color?
I'm glad I brought a selection.
You wanna sit here for a minute?
No.
Any Jay, any kind of.
I know the feeling. You know, abundance of talent, that's lucky.
Anita Schwerner has her hand up.
Hi Anita.
Schwerner.
Schwerner.
Hi Patrick, yes, it's Schwerner.
Schwerner.
I will get it right, Anita.
You got it. Um, I just wanted to say Rene sounds like she would be able to give a good perspective, but her background's in graphic design and web design, so, um, and she is new to the town. So I think, um, maybe as an alternate or as a consultant or some guy, you know, someone to add their opinion from a different perspective, but she doesn't have a financial background or a long-term relationship with the town.
Um, I, look at, I need, I think that, I, I think that Rene is awesome, and, could someone mute? Can you mute everyone?
Yep.
All right. Anita, and I'm, I'm muting Anita.
That was where it was coming from.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Um, uh, my sense is this, you know, one request I think we should make of all seven is that with, with four new folks on the board, um, it may not end up being a cup of tea, all right? I believe we should know that after the first meeting or two. No hard feelings that this isn't kind of a good fit, but I would, I would hope that as the trust fund sets up its rules of operation, that folks who just elect to maybe don't feel it's a good fit or not participate or not show up, that they, um, you know, um, make room for somebody who does want to serve. So with so many folks on a new committee, I'm assuming that we may get one or two who just don't, in retrospect, have, you know, the desire to go forward with it, and that opens up a seat for Mark and Rene, uh, potentially, Mark or Rene potentially, uh, in the first year. So, you know, I hear what you're saying, Anita, and, uh, and Rene was really awesome about saying, I want to help however I can, I don't have to actually be appointed, so.
I think we're clear.
We're a thought.
So we're at Jay, Don, Rainy, Selena, Janet, and Liz and I have already been voted on.
That's right. So I'll, I'll read the complete, the full names if that's all right. So I make a motion that we appoint Ranny Warner, Jay Bukowski, Selena Lamb, I almost said, don't, no, never mind. Um, uh, uh, Jan Ackerman and Don Eaton to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
I'll second it.
That was five. Ranny, Jay, Selena, Jan, and Don Eaton.
Jay and Jay's.
What?
Well, I've already.
We already, we already appointed them.
Liz and Jamie, so we're.
Liz and Jamie were appointed 10 minutes ago, yeah. So can we have a second on that?
I have Jamie and Liz.
Okay. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye Patrick.
All right, you do have to appoint two to the first here.
Now, we're gonna do that, I want to do that with a Ron Robin. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna write the names in a, in a random order, and then you guys are gonna come out, call out the numbers one through seven, in whichever order I put them in, then that person is gonna get the one-year terms, then the two-year term, and then the three-year term.
No.
Yeah, so I want to do it randomly.
It's a decision of the board.
I think it's a decision of the chair, actually. So basically, all I'm gonna do is.
Do we have to do that tonight?
Do we have to do it tonight?
You do have to appoint, by the trust document, you have to appoint two to one year, two to two years, three to three years, and then after this.
Wait, two first, two second, and two third?
Two for three years, and then this gets the board staggered.
That's only six.
Six. No, two in the first year.
Yeah.
Two in the second year.
Yeah.
And three for the third year.
Oh, three.
So that you end up with, and then once you get rotating, it's three-year terms forever. So it's the, it's the.
Unless you guys feel strongly that we should do it a certain way.
I think we go.
I mean, you know, it just seems like they're all great candidates, and we should just randomize it, that's my, my.
Well, we want consistency, and we want some kind of solidity, right?
I would recommend Jamie, Lisa, and Jay for three years. That way the planning board's not changing, the select board's not changing.
Cause I think, yeah, the select board and the planning board's changing all the time, right?
Yeah, I mean, I.
But you got three years, you, you'll be going through.
Right.
So you'll be, you know, up on your third year. I think, uh, the planning board should be three years, that's been changing, so that person, you know, is involved from the start.
Right.
And.
And, cause everyone's gonna get three-year terms after the first election.
Yeah.
What do you mean first election?
Well, if you're a one-yearer, then you, you get, after you're, after you have reappointed next year, then you're appointed for a three-year term. They're only staggered. Yeah, it's just four in person. Uh, appoint someone.
When you first create a board, you have to stagger like this, and then after this, it becomes three-year appointments when your appointments are off.
So whoever.
Then everybody will be three-year after this initial starting point.
But it still has a staggering, right?
Yeah, and you're creating the stagger.
Yeah. So you want to do, appoint Liz, Jay, and Jamie for the three-year terms?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, can I have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. All right, so that leaves us, uh, that leaves us, uh, we need two for one and two for two. Do you want to do my random idea on those?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine with me.
All right, so just give me a number between, uh, Jamie, give me a number between one and four.
Three.
Three. So, uh, I just, without, Jay's already appointed. I'm sorry about that. Uh, Ranny, uh, hold on, where's the other one? This one right here.
Thank you, Patrick.
No, really, it's hard. All right, so start over. Give me a number between one and four.
Two.
Two. So Jan, Jan Ackerman is going to be a one-year person. Give me a number between one and four, not including two.
One.
One. Selena Lamb is gonna be a one-year, so that leaves Ranny and Don Eaton to be two-year appointees.
Good.
Boy, that was easy but not easy.
So then Selena and Janet next fall will have to get either reappointed or new.
Yes, that's right. Same if they, same if they.
If they want. Need a motion to accept that?
All right, so.
Need a motion to accept that?
I'll make a motion when we accept the terms of the years.
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No? All right. The last thing we're gonna do is a public comment, a couple of things. Uh, uh, first, is there any public comment? Anybody want to talk?
There's a woman here.
Yes. Hi Shirley. Shirley Construption, Church Street.
Shirley Miller, 12.
Miller, right. Construption, sorry.
Uh, there's been a lot of conversation, uh, talk about the, uh, residential tax, and I know it was a lot of discussion at the last meeting. Um, there's the, uh, finance committee has done a lot of research on that, too. And, uh, I wrote an article in the paper, uh, today about my feelings on it. Uh, as I said, I was originally opposed to the, the tax, uh, didn't think it was fair, but after reading Patrick's article in the paper, I realized that the money, that the extra money could be used to benefit second home owners, uh, because of the sewer and lake projects. And also, the other thing that is apparent is that this is an annual thing. It could be voted in this year and voted out next year. So it's, you know, it would give the, uh, town the money to go ahead with the sewer project for the lake, which we badly need, uh, to protect the lake.
Can't come, right?
And, uh, and then I say, I don't know whether the money can be used that way or not, but, um, it certainly would, would be a benefit to the town, um, the, um, second homeowners, uh, certainly the lake, the lake needs it badly. So that's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And who else want to speak? Any hands up?
No hands up.
All right. It is my plan at the next meeting to, uh, to present, uh, an overview, we'll actually have Michael with the, help of Donna.
Newberg put his hand up just now.
Okay, well, I'm gonna finish my sentence. Um, here's my, my intention at the next meeting to have, uh, Michael with Donna's help develop a presentation on, uh, just do an evaluation or an inventory of existing, um, and prospective, uh, you know, uh, uh, tax assistance policies, uh, to just make sure that the public and the board understands what all our options are, things like the widow, uh, the widow exemption and the, you know, elderly, uh, tax exemption, the charitable, elderly and disabled charitable gift fund, these, uh, means-tested and non-means-tested programs that we've been talking about. It is not intended to be a debate on the relative merits, I just wanted to get out there some solid information for everyone to be considering, so that later in September we can then, uh, you know, start to drill it down into what some of our options are. Um, the other thing I, I plan to provide, produce for the next meeting, uh, at several meetings, uh, both Second Homeowner meeting earlier today and at Jay's meeting yesterday, there was some talk on statistics, and, and I also think it's appropriate to present statistics and sources of those, uh, to, um, make sure we're all on the same page as to what our assumptions are. Uh, and that's what I plan to do, and we'll limit it to that at the next meeting. Any comments on that? No, just. Okay, uh, so I'll write that agenda up, and it'll be posted at the next meeting. Hey Joe, you have a further comment?
Uh, I did, I just wanted to respond, um, to the last speaker, who I think misunderstands what the RTE would do, because it would not raise new money for the town, it would just keep the, at its best, if it worked, which I don't think it will, but if it, if it worked, it would raise the same amount of revenues, but paid for over a different base, paid for by, uh, paid for more so by part-time homeowners and shifted sort of as a gift to, um, full-time homeowners, at least whose properties are valued less than $2 million. So it's, it's really a bad idea for Stockbridge for a lot of reasons. It doesn't hit any target, it doesn't define what target it really wants to hit, it doesn't hit it successfully, even if it did, and, uh, doesn't raise new revenues for the town. So I applaud all efforts to, one, gather more facts, do more analysis about what the target is, how many there are, how much it would cost, what we need to do to get people to utilize and assist them in, uh, obtaining existing benefits, then decide what the shortfall is, what we want to do about it, what we can afford to do about it, and budget, uh, or under any program or a number of other alternative ways of, uh, raising funds from all of us, if necessary, to raise any additional funds, and target any, targeting it, targeting it narrowly to the, uh, group which is defined, uh, to receive benefits. Uh, there's a long way to go between now and when that happens, and I frankly, I'm a little scared that there's momentum to do something, even though it's not yet defined, by, uh, early to mid-October. And I would urge you all, please, slow down. Uh, I know there are efforts being made to try to do this. Slow down, um, continue to collect and focus the, uh, the, the facts relevant to Stockbridge, not just general statistics, uh, although there's plenty about what other people have done that suggests you should be very cautious, and there are other alternatives, I won't mention them all, because I think you've all heard about them by now, that might be much more appropriate if, if there's anything to do, uh, and then you would, uh, you would, if you're gonna spread, if you're gonna make a determination there's something good for the town, and that there's some cost associated which we really should spend, and you know who you're gonna spend it for, I think you'd have buy-in from the broad community if you did that and made that determination and, and raised the money through a broad-based method that did not divide us, categorize us as part-time or full-time, and, uh, gave the whole community something to be hopeful about. But please, kill the RTE, just kill it dead, because it's, it's very toxic to Stockbridge. Thanks.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, with that in mind, I make a motion to adjourn.